Good morning, everybody. This is going to be a long one for introductions, isn't it? Good morning. We are moving into our budget workshop. Roll up looking at every aspect of it. And we're going to start with introductions of those in the room. I'm sorry, but that's how it works for the record. So let's start with the back rows first and then we'll move forward.
Jennifer Byerly.
Brian Matthews.
Deidre Callen.
Wes Stockwell, Coroner.
Michelle Crowe.
Leo Kim.
Sunny Miles.
Jim Madsen.
Diana Roderick.
Lisa Wong.
Justin Smith.
Sarah Adams.
Jason Brockley.
Cassie Robinson.
Amber Stotz.
Jerry Yekonrod.
Andrew Davis.
Melody Peterson.
Mike Dorsey.
Darcy Oliver.
Mary Jean Kurmatzek.
Russ Hoesterham.
Ginger Brooks.
Robin Lockwood.
And the door, please.
Becky Kirkpatrick.
Laura Rijks.
Kathy Shesley.
Frank Tintin.
Randy Nevilley. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you. I wanted to start off by kind of going through a brief discussion of where we are, where we are in the process, and what is the process going forward. So today what we have is a first blush of proposed budget modifications for 2016 for the general fund. On Monday at 3 o'clock, we'll have a second workshop session, and that will include the budget modifications for special funds as well as any other modifications that come out of this group for the general fund. The following week...
Would you please go to my office and get my glasses out of the middle by whiteboard.
The following week, we have follow-up work sessions scheduled available for those departments that want to come back in, have a follow-up conversation, so that we can confirm and address any changes, any corrections, and/or any additional modifications that the departments want to put forward, and for both the general fund as well as for the special funds. So, at this point, what we have is a summary of the expense of departments. The first page of the report starts off with a review of what was the adopted budget for 2015 on a department by department and program by program basis. The followed, moving to the right of the columns, the request for the 2016 preliminary budgets. And then continuing to the right column, we have the proposed 2016 budget with modifications that the commissioners have put forward. Budget request for 2015 that was adopted was for a $36,198,000 budget. The budget request that was put forward for the 2016 preliminary budget was for a $38,1,740 budget. That assumed beginning fund balance of $8,515,873 and no ending fund balance. What the proposed budget is, is $37,983,322 with a slightly reduced beginning fund balance of $8,020,072 and maintaining an ending fund balance of $3,596,293. Modifications that were made to each of the departments are identified in pages three and four of the document, and it's outlined on a department as well as on a program basis as to what those were. We can go through each department, program by program, to make sure that we've covered all of what the commission has requested. Or we can discuss the impacts of what the modifications have on ending fund balance and fund balances moving forward. What would be your preference?
For the moment, just unless you have some, I'd like to take a few more moments to look over the document and...
Absolutely. You should. You should.
As we didn't put it in, back out.
So, just...
Parks and Trails and Mainland, too. I think that's a quarter five there, a quarter five in the center.
And that is, I budgeted in Parks and Trails, we'll do an allocation to split them up between the two programs. So, in general, the major changes were per your request, remove all the re-class requests, which came to $100,000 and change.
Did you create another fund for that, though?
I put a reserve in against...
100,000.
Yeah, $100,161 against the ending fund balance for that. Correct. That should be 16. Which again, it did last year as well. And last year, we were at an ending fund balance of $4,315,462. Taking that forward during the 13th month and then reserving on top of that would be slightly negative. The reason that we are not in the negative for this year is because of the one-time revenues that we've received and revenue increases that we've received in this year's budget or in this year's actuals.
Can you say those one-tens are about?
Something less than $2 million this year. Because our ending fund balance was projected to be $4,006,000, and we're going to have probably $8 million in ending fund balance this year. Those are definitely due to increased revenues. One of the problems we have is because we're just getting this, I don't have the time to digest it enough yet.
And I'm told down here is the FDU.
Correct. Coming in for the grant contract, first of all.
Do you have, Lily, the stuff on switching certain, certain numbers?
I added in $100,000 worth of squips in certain revenues.
Right, a moment. Looking at all this, I'm not prepared to make any cuts or anything or changes, but if there were need to be, I need to look it over a lot more firstly. Are you running the same issue? Because we look different from this. We haven't touched the treasurer's revenue projections. Okay, let's talk about that for a second. We had some conversations on that. What's the difference between us and you on that?
The DNR and probably size taxes. The Department of Natural Resources is projecting potentially increasing those dollars in 2016 to double what they were in 2015.
I think you remember.
I think I remember, just a million dollars.
Okay.
But that there is a 15% probability that that will be the correct projection this year.
15?
15%.
19?
Yes.
And it's not, so we did not include it. Based on planned harvests?
Yeah.
Income is based on, the 15% is based on price of...
They did estimate whether or not they will harvest, not on the price. Yeah. It's dependent on weather and their cycles, construction cycles, harvesting cycle. Whatever.
It's not a lot. Do you expect revenues on lease and headlands?
Yeah, we do start, but it's not a lot.
A thousand.
Yeah, it's a couple of thousand dollars. There are revenues for new construction, which we're kind of acquiring from the auditor's office as to what that amount is, but again, that's minor dollars.
Yeah, it's usually about $40,000.
Yeah.
So the DNR revenue that we are assuming is about $1,000?
Oh, yes, that's correct. And it's what we budgeted for, slightly higher than what we budgeted for last year, but still not near the $2 million that they're projecting. 15% accuracy.
What is it, do we have it here?
Those are the dollar variances by department.
Just on that line.
It's from...
Also, that's the whole department.
Correct. So the one area where we could see considerable increase, again, one-time, is in the DNR revenue, but we haven't projected it, we haven't budgeted for it because of the uncertainty in Department of Natural Resources' prediction in actually getting there.
Very pretty.
Any other departments, differences?
The only other one would be in the retail sales tax. Continuing projections or the growth that we've seen this year might add a couple of hundred thousand, as high as maybe 300,000 to 400,000 to the budget. But what the treasurer is projecting is maintaining the levels that we have rather than expecting to see a continued increase.
Actually, everybody should assume a 300,000 increase.
But maintaining an increase at the levels that we currently have, rather than to continue to increase it at a rate that we've seen over the last two years. Again, budgeting conservatively, there's some possibility that we won't acquire or gain that much income.
And the property tax assumes the 1%?
That assumption is in here, yes.
And that's in?
Correct. And that comes to $93,174.
Could you even talk a little bit about potential shift, one-time levy shift?
That's not in there at all.
Without making differences, 1.5, 1.2?
Well, if... Yeah, it's a wash, it's an in and an out.
Oh, that's still an in.
Correct. And it funds the payments out.
On a whole, instead of making...
Instead of making partial payments.
So it's not the full amount, it'd be a savings of a certain amount this year or difference of a certain amount this year?
No, it's dollar for dollar. If you transfer a dollar, then you have to pay that dollar, then you have the dollar to pay.
Okay, but right now, if we're putting them in and not putting them back in, do we have revenues not showing up?
You could delay paying if that, yes.
No, if we're already putting it in, we're talking about bringing it back, and it's not included, is that?
No, it's not included in this projection.
Okay, so we're paying it out. If we had a levy shift and we're putting it back in, wouldn't that count to the revenue side still? But right now, it's not coming back in.
Well, the only piece, yes, that is correct. It is the $300,000 and the $100,000.
Because that's the only part you're putting in for that.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's not in the budget, per se, as it's a placeholder for pressures on ending fund balance.
Okay, so in the balance we have this year, how much are we calculating for this year? Because I do know we said that we're going to have some paybacks for this budget.
Yeah, that is only in pressures on ending fund balance.
3, 4, 5, 6. $7,000?
$600,000. 300, 200?
Oh, the re-class request.
Would not be part of that. 600, 4,700.
So if you're going forward, look at these numbers with others, would you like to increase part of the sales tax on the revenues in, and would you like to increase part of the timber as the revenue's coming in? And would you like to increase, reduce the pressure on the ending fund balance by that conversion? It's sort of things to ask, but to have a look back and see what it looks like.
Okay, so we're assuming an 8% increase on the...
Sales tax?
Sales tax already.
Correct.
On the soft 2%.
We've been projecting 14%, 15% as a rate of growth, year-to-year, 12% to 15%.
Yeah, the only growth I think that's left is sales tax on construction. I feel like our commercial operations are... I don't see a lot of commercials up next year. I mean, she was thinking something about that.
I'm thinking how much of this was growth because of new businesses coming in. I don't know with that.
Yeah, I'm guessing that. I mean, next coast. And you have real-time numbers from revenue on that, do you know?
Yes.
With the two-month lag?
Yes, real time is with the two-month lag.
Yeah, I'm one of the ones that always asks us to budget extremely conservatively, but maybe we need to look at a happy medium and see what it would look like on both sides and see what we want to do after we have it.
I don't think that goes any higher than 10%.
To just see what some of the happy mediums are on some things, including some of the lumber, the timber.
Yeah, we're projecting $500,000, we're at already a million this year.
So it's the same.
And we budgeted $400,000 for this year. And next year, DNR is projecting to double what they were paid already this year.
So that'd be $2 million.
Are they divided up in how many cuts? How many different cuts?
I don't recall.
Well, we could probably be safe, like I said, find in a happy medium between it to look at for whatever. Yeah, it doesn't even that we have to even, you know, take it, but at least look at what it looks like in the budget.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Don't budget it.
Yeah, if we got a million, they're expected to bring $2 million, maybe we should look at 1.2, just see what it looks like in the budget first.
Okay.
It seems like a fairly safe bet. If they're saying $2 million, to be safe.
Two, but a great look at number, yeah?
Right now, I'm just thinking about looking at it for ourselves.
As part of this analysis.
Although everybody's here, we're doing this, this was kind of just our wrap-up for us to look at the numbers. I apologize that somehow it must have come out differently, but this is our first look at it rolled up.
That's their first look, too.
Yeah.
I'd be curious.
We have to look at it, decide how to handle it, the best ways to do it. You know, if we can pull off what we would like to do, when we discuss these things as commissioners, you know, we were trying to be able to utilize the requests of everybody that was put in, see how much of it we could actually pull off. It doesn't mean that you can't, but you have to work to try this year because things have been moving forward. And we discussed as a commission that because things, I mean, we want to be able to help you get where you need to go. Most of you never asked for anything much more than absolutely needed, and we know that and appreciate that. So that's why we are where we're at right now. So as you can see, it's a little more aggressive than it would have been at last year, but we were being more aggressive and trying to find a way to help the departments. So no way it's done today. I apologize if I was. Okay.
Well, yeah, so 1.2 on the timber to look at.
Add 2% to the sales tax?
Yeah.
Yeah, add 2% to the sales tax.
I would like to look at the one-time shift. So I'll send you that extension.
Well, I think we should end the conversation, at least put the money in, money out.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's a difference, it's a point we don't actually affect the departments, it's just moving from one to the other.
And starting from now.
Yeah, and I'd like to look at doing it full. The reason why full is all of it, not just a partial payment this year.
Okay.
Look at doing the whole payment one time, this way it'll give us a better look at what 2017 will look like as well.
I agree.
That'll make an effect on both sides. Does that make a difference? Because that would be about a million five total in and out, so either way, that's still going to be a million five total on 2017. Looking back, yeah. As we can see, 2017's not looked too good right now, the total we're doing.
And then, the marijuana profit shares.
That's still a big question mark as far as what exactly is that going to be?
17 million, that was agreed by the legislature to disprove. Many populations are...
It's still up in the air.
And the sales tax on that. Have you, have you any way of separating that out? Can we, no, we're coding it?
I can find out.
Yeah, would you kind of how they're coding it and how we can be tracking the revenues, sales tax revenues?
On the shares part of the total, with all the...
Three, four, five, six, seven thousand?
Seven hundred thousand.
No, six, six hundred thousand. Three hundred, two hundred?
Oh, three classes, that's correct.
Would not be part of that. Six hundred, four thousand, seven hundred.
So if you're going forward, just look at these numbers with others, would you like to increase part of the sales tax on the revenues in and would you like to increase part of the timber as the revenue's coming in? And would you like to increase, really see the pressure on end-of-fund accounts by that conversion? It's sort of things to ask, but having it all back is probably a considerable point.
Okay, so we're assuming an eight percent increase on the?
Sales tax?
Sales tax already.
Correct. We've been projecting fourteen, fifteen percent as a rate of growth, year-to-year twelve to sixteen, fourteen to sixteen, fifteen.
Yeah, but the only growth I think that's left is sales tax on construction. I feel like our commercial offering, I don't see a lot of commercial growth next year. I mean, she was thinking something about that.
I'm thinking how much of this was growth because of new businesses coming in. I don't know with that.
Next coast, and you have real-time numbers from revenue on that, do you know?
Yes.
With the two-month line?
Yes, real-time is with the two-month line.
Yeah, I'm one of the ones that always asked us to budget extremely conservatively, but you know, maybe we need to look at a happy medium and see what it would look like on both sides and see what we want to do after we have it.
I don't know that I'd go any higher than ten percent.
Because I just see what some of the happy mediums are, some things including some of the lumber, you know, with the timber.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're projecting five hundred thousand, we're at already a million this year. So at the same, we budgeted four hundred for this year. And next year, DNR is projecting to double what they are paid already this year.
So that'd be two million.
Are they divided up in how many cuts, how many different cuts?
Right.
Well, we could probably be safe, like I said, finding a happy medium between it to look at for our numbers. Yeah, it doesn't even, that we haven't even, yeah, taken, but at least look at what it looks like in the budget.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
No budgeting.
Yeah, if we got a million there, expect this to bring two million, maybe we should look at one point two, just see what it looks like in the budget first and it seems like a fairly safe bet.
For a look.
If they're budgeting, if they're saying two million to be safe.
Two, but a great look on the revenue?
Right now, I'm just thinking about looking at it for ourselves.
As part of this analysis.
Although everybody's here wondering this, this was kind of just a wrap-up for us to look at the numbers. I apologize that somehow it must have come out differently, but this is our first look at it rolled up.
Well, it's their first look too.
Yeah.
I'd be curious.
Yeah, we have to look at it, decide how to handle it, what the best ways to do it. You know, if we can pull off what we would like to do, you know, when we discuss these things as commissioners, you know, we were trying to be able to utilize the requests of everybody that was putting in, see how much of it we could actually pull off. It doesn't mean that you can't, but you have to, we wanted to try this year because things have been moving forward. And we discussed as a commission that because things are moving forward, we want to be able to help you get where you need to go. Most of you never asked for anything much more than absolutely needed, and we know that and appreciate that. So that's why we are where we're at right now. So as you can see, it's a little more aggressive than it would have been at last year, but we were being more aggressive by trying to find a way to help the departments. So by far, no, no way it's done today, you know, I apologize if I thought it was. Okay.
Well, yeah, so one point two on the timber to look at.
Had two percent of the sales tax?
Yeah.
Yeah, so two percent of the sales tax.
I would like to look at the one-time shift.
Well, I think we should end the conversation, at least put the money in my, right now. That's a difference because the way we don't actually affect the departments, it's just a moving from one to the other.
And starting now.
Yeah, I'd like to look at doing it full. The reason why full is all of it, not just a partial payment this year. Look at doing the whole payment one time this way, it was a better look at what 2017 will look like as well.
I agree.
That'll make an effect on both, on both sides. Because that makes this different. Because that would be about a million five total in and out, so either way, that's still going to be a million five total on 2017. Looking back, yeah. Yeah, as we can see, 2017's not looked too good right now through what we're doing.
And, no, and then the marijuana profit shares.
That's, that's still a big question mark as far as what exactly is that going to be?
Seventeen million, that was agreed by the legislature to disappear. Many populations are.
Still up in the air.
And the sales tax on that. Do you, do you have any way of separating that out? Do we even know what it is? How revenue's coding it?
I can find out.
Yeah, would you kind of how they're coding it and how we can be tracking the revenues? Sales tax revenues?
On the shares part of the total, with all the across-the-board vehicles, the pro and stuff like that, is that the?
Yeah, that includes, there is all the across-the-boards and colas that are, contracts have been resolved, as well as seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fifteen vehicles, plus three hundred thousand for outsourcing inmates and increasing the revenue for Swift and Certain, adding the revenue because it was excluded.
But what I said is how much was the, just the, all the wages and salaries and stuff like that?
I don't have it separated in there, I have to pull that out.
Yeah, I didn't see it separated there, I was wondering if you could tell on the main sheet.
Oh, we have the variance. You have to go by the part.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have variance, we also have an increase of a deputy in there, so how much of?
That's in the voting side, that's special funds.
Okay, I'm just wondering how much is the actual increase?
I have to do, I have to do the check, yeah.
Please just get that to me so I know. Not that I can't do it, I just want to remember it.
Then you include any transfer out and?
No, I increased the deputy in the vote, increased the voting fund by one deputy to be paid out of the voting.
Did we just out-left the, I don't know, something?
No, not off the top of my head.
What other parts have we missed, I need to think about, you know, of course, increasing more revenues is always good, but is there any other ones that are hanging out there that we're not thinking about right now for revenues?
Nothing that we have had been already discussed.
Thank you, Justin.
Well, I'd love to hear, what is it?
I'm going to download.
This is county I-502 recreational marijuana, total marijuana excise tax to date, one million?
Five oh two data, Doc, what's all the data?
That's all the tax that was taken in, not how much we did.
Do you have further down? Per county, it goes per county.
Additional sales tax revenue, seventy-nine percent revenue, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, one point four, so bring that down to seven point five. Marijuana purchase item, seven hundred, one point four million, twenty-three dollars per person. This is good, where'd you get them?
Who's it, they gave it to me? Dobson?
From Portwood, yes. Do you have recommendations about that?
No, because the only thing we can count on is the sales tax, so, you know, I guess that's insane.
Okay, well, I'm comfortable with that, going to put that down. Anybody else got an email they can send us?
Find extra money?
I'll take all the emails I can get. Just be fair, send the next one to me so I can get excited on my side. Okay, so.
And our date seller is TJ's.
Again, if I like to see all the numbers again, walk up again and say I want to come up with what things.
That's the sales tax. No, hang on, that's the sales tax. The biggest seller is TJ's.
Okay. I can take one.
Door it to me, please. No, not you, I was asking him, you got to be careful what you say, please. Send each other information, you never know, right? Okay.
I don't have any other recommendations for changing.
And me, after I go through them, so I have some more questions to ask you.
And like I said, we'll take these recommendations into consideration for the meeting on Monday. Add to it the special funds, and then have a modified budget for printing and for, getting into consideration for the budget here on the seventh of December.
With follow-up workshops, shops that help the?
Correct, the thinking changes, because once we do the first draft of a print, we can still make modifications up until the seventh of December.
Our unexpended, our unexpended amount that we're guessing for this is two hundred five.
Correct. Which again, was one of those. I haven't done an analysis to see how we're tracking it. It's coming close to where I can.
The press conference had a question on one of your pages.
It was a two thousand, four hundred dollar item, and I'll clarify that.
They'll have it fixed, okay.
I'm not sure if I left language in the changes or if I left the change the way it was. I have to double check.
Do you have any questions that have come in or you want to look at, or you want to take some time to look at it and then come back?
No, like I said, I have to be done. If you'd like, I do have any questions.
Okay, I prefer if we can. We're going to go ahead and we're going to allow you an opportunity to ask some questions right now. We ask that you please, this is not a political thing, let's not make more, if you have a question that will help to make, to verify some things, this will be your opportunity. But I would like to say also, this is limited to staff, this is not public testimony or anything at this time. Is there anybody who has some questions, any confusions? Come on, I'm a little confused, I'm usually not.
What was the day again for, if we wanted to meet with you again about our budgets?
We have a workshop on Monday at three, I didn't know the format that we wanted to use, and then I continued to schedule workshops on Monday afternoon, it was like mid-December.
Yeah, and in between that, though, you're also still welcome to talk to Frank and us.
Absolutely, please come forward.
I've had four of you ask me questions, directly send me stuff, and I have no problem with that. As a matter of fact, it actually makes us, our job a little better because there's things that we miss and we don't see, and we may have a question because of it.
So start out with an email.
If, you don't have to.
Schedule it.
Start out with an email and then we could schedule a follow-up.
We might be able to fix it like that.
So what Diana's doing, as correctly, you're blocking out times on each of the Monday's afternoons, is that correct?
I've scheduled a budget workshop, but I haven't been specific as far as the agenda or?
Would you be okay with them contacting Diane and saying you'd like some time for those budgeted workshops?
Yeah, if you want to, we want you to have it, so it's just that simple. You know, it shouldn't, it's going to be a lot easier now because we're so close, the questions, a lot of them have been answered, but you still might have some more.
Yeah, I, not having seen this before either, and I don't know if Brian knows already, but can you, Frank, talk about the anticipated change with the support services add, a financial analyst and a grant contract administrator, and then pulling funds out with Public Health and Public Works? Does that mean that you're taking centrally all of the grant programs?
It means that you'll be able to, if you want to utilize that, you'll be able to. What we're looking at doing is bringing in somebody that'll do grant writing for all different parts, try and start to bring in some revenues that we've been missing over these years. This person would also administer grants, but also, what's the term you were like in the?
Contracts.
Administer contracts. We also would have another person that's working part-time doing financial things and working on those contracts, because there's so many different ones, to alleviate some of the pressures, yes, and give another avenue for some of those things to go. Now, we've had some talks when it comes to certain road projects, for example, that we expect that the engineers are going to want to be doing that themselves, but that is exactly what we're looking to do.
Okay, so, I guess what I wondered is what the impact is on our staff who have managed permits and contracts?
Right now, some of that would be determined by you. This is the budget aspect of it that brings the person in. You know, you'll utilize it to the best of your ability in your department as we're by the figure.
So this is a placeholder to develop a program, is what this is?
Okay.
And put that on top of the consolidated, proposed consolidation, there's still a lot of moving parts. So look at this as a placeholder and don't get down to specifics yet, but if you have something to inform that process in this, this position, we'll work with that as we develop it.
We just, we have some contracts that we can't keep track of. We have grants that are out there that is real hard to keep track of, but some of them we don't even know at all what's going on. And so we've got to find a way to pull that stuff in. And then the opportunity to go out for grants that we haven't been doing, every other county does it, not just because it's fun, they do because it works. And.
I get that, I'm just trying to see, I'm trying to understand the change and how much is being pulled out of the, out of the department and know what the impact would be on our staff who are doing the grant writing and the grant management and reporting.
And that's the best example we can give you, and especially at the time, it may also depend, like we do in some of the other departments, billing out, so to speak, for the person. There's as much has been done in that department or that department, so it may, might get built out that way too. It's just a placeholder right now.
How did you divide the transfers?
A third, a third, a third.
There's, there's no way Public Works uses a third of contract for essential services.
Could you speak louder than this?
There's no way we use a third of that contracting person or would have the need for it. Our contracts are specific enough that if you're buying toilet paper, that makes sense, you current expense benefits from that for Public Works. But our road projects and our grants and all those things that we follow, there's no way we'd use that, so.
And, and your commission happens to disagree with that?
I agree.
With the idea that there are possibilities of hiring people that actually understand and know roads also, and that would be the hope in our discussion of what we were looking at, to bring people that are specifically educated in that issue.
Excellent. And then the commission is also adhering to the state laws as far as those grant monies and everything else?
We would be, absolutely.
Perfect, then you guys can follow that.
Yeah. And we'll have, we'll have further conversations with it, but that's what we were planning at this point. Yes?
Were you talking about adding one position or two, a financial person and a grant person, or is that one and the same?
Go ahead. Do you want to have, it's one position for the grant and stuff like that, with a financial person that'll be doing, taking care of some of the financial aspects and part of it will be also handling the contract.
Addition to what's in the preliminary request.
And besides that, that person's also used in other places as well when it comes to the finance aspect. That's not solely just for contract. Other questions?
I had a question. I heard you talked about adding a, maybe a, a full-time FTE as a voting officer in the sheriff's office.
That was, that was our special one.
We discussed that a little bit earlier.
Probably not at this, at this, but we can, we can talk about it, I'll be also. I'll be more than happy to stay after the meeting and we can talk one-on-one first and.
Well, that's directly, he had a lot of information on that, I guess.
Well, I mean, I, I'd prefer to do any, you know, follow-up session.
I was going to say, we have set up a special one.
That's what I'm saying, if people are going to hopefully contact Diane, schedule time.
But if you want to talk afterwards, we're welcome to also, we're both open for conversations, but yeah, anything, decisions like that would be made. I'll run a brief meeting. I apologize, this is only for employees today, this is not a public one, I'm sorry. Unless you're working, are you working for the sheriff's department?
No.
Okay, I can make clear, like I make clear, this, this particular part is only for the employees stuff at, at county level.
Oh, okay.
On this one, I apologize, this is still, no public test.
I'm sorry, I thought it was a public.
Yeah, but it's still a public test only on this one.
No, but you asked for if we had questions, and we had a question, so, sorry about that.
All right. Is there any other questions?
One last thing, Commissioner, just so you remember, when you do, if you consider the levy shift, there's certain rules and regulations you have to go through. Right now, there's two million dollars in wrap funding, grant approved from the county road administration board next year, that if you don't follow the rules correctly are in jeopardy of being.
But it's not that kind of levy shift. We'll have, we'll have more conversations, there's parts you don't know, it's not like that.
I just want to make you aware of it.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I don't think there's, there's been any discussion, at least at this point, of diving into that stuff. Other questions? All right, we thank you very much, and you know, again, if you need anything, set up your schedules, if you'd like to talk this individually, be here for a while, I know the commissioner has to leave by noon, as I said, but we'll be around here now and a little later as well. If you want this, we are adjourned.